We are formally supporting the values of this connection of the values, the insights to the charitable organizations. Because we have so many who see the dead go back to the You're the charitable organization. We want you to change.
Yeah, they don't have more work than they can do.
I thought I felt right about you. I need chance to hear about watch or something like that. Kind of commission. All right, very. I can present. Yeah, it's because I'm on the agenda. Thank. The. Amendment to. City. Heard about this. What do you think? Has been for a recommendation.
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah. And if you're not a Jim Burris, then we should know. He was required to present. He saw those. I didn't wish to talk about it. Nobody could move to. No one could move to. Reach out even just like. Doing. He did. 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 My spare time. We had to talk. Very agenda. Or something about. These perfect.
It's always great to have you as a partner.
I don't think anything in there looks too. That was my. Guest. Minutes. Next one probably get. Something to do with. I too. Which went down. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Like you.
Okay. To start today, we're going to have a prayer about James Sheego.
If he would please rise and bow your head to me. God of wisdom and God of love, we pray that she would give wisdom to our city leaders, that she would move their hearts to serve the common good. We pray that she would continue to watch over and protect our community. And we pray, oh Lord, that she make your presence known to us, that we can be your hands and feet, helping our city become the best city it can be. We all ask all of this in your name. Amen.
My things. What do you believe?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Bell, will you?
Right. Please. Assistant. Albert Hillman. Albert Langer. Here. Albert Proctor. Here. Albert Riddle. Anyone present that says Albert Hillman off the number?
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting?
I'll link the motion.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay. Motion made by Bill Linder and second by David Langer. Minutes have been approved. Okay, at this time, I'm going to open, open it up for public comments. Does anyone want to come to the podium and make public comments? If you do, you have three minutes. Okay. No public comments at this time. Next, are there any additions or additions to the agenda? Okay. And currently, we have no old business, so we'll move on down to new business. And first up, we have downtown revitalization with Jean Shannon. Probably say some things. And then we have Tim and Rita Richardson here to give us a little update about the weekend.
Hello. Give you a quick update. We have some really good news that we got this past week. Our rebate money came in and it came into the tune of six hundred twenty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. Don't forget the ninety-seven cents. Compared to that, I looked back and back as far as two thousand and eighteen, our total was about a hundred and sixty-three thousand. So we've gone from a hundred and sixty-three thousand to six hundred and thirty, or twenty-three thousand in six short years. It's quite an achievement, I think, for the city. A lot to be proud of for what work has happened. I'm going to ask you for two things if I could. I put a copy of the budget that we're working on. And that's, this is last year's budget. That figure I just gave you is up there top on blue, in blue, but it's not included anywhere in any of this, other than just an objection there. But we've made the last lot payment on the, on the park. That's the first one in green, and so that puts a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars back into the K for us to use for revitalization. We're working on what we have spent for the engineering, on the different projects, to see what we will carry forward for next year. We feel like there's going to be some carried forward, hopefully. But in green also, there's Live in Livingston and Christmas in the Country. And in order to get the, the act booked for Live in Livingston, we'd like to within the ask for that seventy thousand dollars to be approved ahead of the budget. It'll be the same in the next budget. And then Christmas in the Country, we'd like to increase that to thirty thousand dollars because that's on us as well. But I'd like to get your approval to spend those two, or to approve those two numbers so that we can get started on planning for that Live in Livingston, Christmas in the Country.
You have a motion?
I got a question for Dean Burris.
Okay.
Do you know what our, with that thirty thousand will, I guess what we'll see from, from Christmas in the Country?
Yeah, we, Lord, do you have an idea of what we could tell them about that?
Well, I don't have the paper in front of me, and Shannon might be able to help me, but there are several items that were, Bouncy House, a slide.
There were several things of that nature that were purchased for, for the use, to have it up on the, have some of it down at Central Park and some of it up on the square, just to encourage more people to come out on that second night of Christmas in the country. So it's more for the kids, just to bring some additional things to the downtown square. Again, just to bring more people, man, it's been money.
And it's been changed up. It's not the caramel rides this year, so it's a, it's a different atmosphere this year.
So you already budgeted twenty-six thousand four hundred, so you're just roughly asked for an additional four thousand? Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Increase to thirty?
Yes. Correct. Correct. Increase to thirty.
That's the difference.
No, 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 sorry, no.
No, just an increase of four thousand. And the other amount, that's what we had last year, we'll just keep it the same amount. That way, we can, we know what we got to work with. So those two items. And again, we feel like there's going to be some carried over, even with this budget that we had presented last year, there was eighty-three thousand left over. So we're going to have some carryover, but I should have that budget, full budget for you by next meeting.
So you need a motion?
Does anyone have any other questions? If not, go out of motion.
I make a question to approve both.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Rex Dale and a second by Bill Linder. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Black sign, motion passed.
Thank you. Also, on the courthouse project, I had a message from Ray Day, said we made some very good progress. We only have a few items left before we can get T-Doc to get D-O-K for beating that out to get started, the long-winded courthouse project. He said the sidewalk project is the same. We had some good progress, and he felt like we'll be beating that out soon as well. So those things are good. And as you know, the disfunding that we have goes to tune of two thousand twenty-eight. So this year and going forward, we're looking for very impactful projects that will carry forward even after the money runs out. So we'll be coming to you with some ideas on that at a later date, too. Thank you. Any question?
How's the Church Street project coming?
Church Street, thank you for bringing that up. Church Street should start paving anytime now. The contract for paving was approved, and they can start as early as October first, today, while providing that'll start any day now. And that'll be planned and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, wanted to talk about some ribbon cuttings, ground breakings, and some other things going on this month today. We celebrated ribbon cutting with Clydesdale Farms. They are, of course, their farm was actually destroyed by a tornado a couple of years ago, and they have been working on rebuilding, and they have rebuilt everything, and they have, they're going to open their farm up to farm tours, and hopefully starting a nonprofit that will allow for people that just want to, just need some extra peace in their life to come out and enjoy the farm and enjoy the horses. I really do think they've got a great thing going. It's a, it will classify as agritourism, and it'll be one of the few agritourism locations that we have in Arlington County. They are having a grand opening this weekend on Saturday from two to six. So if you have, have some time, please go out and check them out. We have a groundbreaking tomorrow at TCAT at ten AM, so all of you are invited to that. We have another ribbon cutting and grand opening on Friday at two PM on the downtown square at Livingston Nutrition. They're over on East Court Square side. Then we have a grand opening and ribbon cutting for Watson Chevrolet at ten AM next Monday, and another ribbon cutting on October eleventh at ten AM with cost at the Tennessee Valley. They are over next to the police department in that little strip mall at the end of North Church. We are in the process of working with three other businesses on scheduling ribbon cutting, so as I know what those dates are, I will let you know, but we would like to see all of you at those if possible. That's a lot, a lot of good things happening. And then our largest event of the year is happening later this month. Following brought out close to eight thousand people last year to our downtown square within a four-hour period. So it's definitely one of the higher-traffic events that we have. So that will be on October twenty-sixth. We have already started taking registrations for booths and vendor booths on our website. So one of the first things that's happening is our haunted walking tours downtown. October twelfth, there will be one at seven. October nineteenth, we'll have one at seven and eight-thirty. And then on October twenty-sixth, we'll have one at seven and eight-thirty as well. Tickets are five dollars a person, and you can reserve the tickets at discoverlivingstonian.com/honneditour2024. Then, of course, our regular downtown trick-or-treating for the kids that happens from twelve to four that day. Anyone who has not already reserved their booths, please register. It's discoverlivingstonian.com/following2024. And I'm just going to say this publicly so everybody can hear it if they're listening, if you are a business and you want to set up a booth, please just don't tell me to sign you up because you won't get signed up. I will forget. So please go to the website and register for a booth so we can get you placed where you need to be placed. Something new this year, we're doing a following fall market at Central Park from twelve to seven. So if you are a vendor and would like to set up to sell your items, you can do that in Central Park that day, and you can register at our website, following2024 as well. Then at three-thirty at Central Park, our very own cousin, the, the band cousin will be playing at three-thirty at Rotary Main Stage. Then we will be showing Beetlejuice at five PM at Central Park. And lastly, the Heritage Museum, they are doing their night at the museum again this year, that is from five to nine. And for those of you who didn't go last year, try to take a moment and go check that out because they've been working very hard with some of the high school students. They've got about thirty high school students that will be helping them with this. So they'll be bringing the museum to life. So these kids will be telling stories of all of the exhibits, and they will be dressed in period clothing as if they were that particular person in history. So it is a wonderful, wonderful event to take kids to, or just to visit without the gifts, just whatever. It's a great event, and you'll learn a lot about county, I can promise you that. And I think that's all. I could probably talk more, but I'll say that until next month.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, are Tim and Rita Richardson artists in?
Hi, my name is Tim Richardson. I'm the president of the new OAK County Arts Council. We're a new nonprofit organization set up in January. We do, we started doing several things around town. We have the, we started the Libby Allen High School Art Contest in April. Try to do that every year in April, with encourage our high school students to get more involved in art. We do a monthly art mixer, which is more for adults to get together and build community and celebrate art and get more engaged with the arts. Those have been very popular. We do this at the Chamber, thanks to Shannon, and they've been well attended. We do art classes every second Saturday of the month. Those have been well attended. Suzanne Smith, the local artist, has been teaching those. But really, what I want to tell you about today, you may have seen some of these posters around town. This is our first big event. It's called Paint Livingston. And what this is, is a, it's a painting contest. So we put out a call to all artists throughout the state. So thirty-eight different artists are coming here from all over the state, from Nashville and Oxford, all throughout the company. And you'll see them setting up their easels all around town and all around the county. They'll be painting outside, and it's a competition, so they'll, they'll do the three paintings, and they'll submit those paintings Saturday morning, and they'll need an exhibition at the library from twelve to four. So I encourage you to come out and check out the artwork that's created. They'll feature our county and our city. And then there's a sort of mini-competition at Saturday morning from nine-thirty to eleven-thirty. They're all around the square, and in just two hours, these artists will go from a blank canvas to a finished painting. And so it's kind of magical to watch. And the idea is, is that hopefully folks will come out and, and see them at work and be inspired to create work themselves and get more engaged in the arts. Our overarching mission is to really help kids in K through twelve, and so we only have two art teachers in this county, Libby and Eddie at the high school. And we want to help them out, we want to help them reach more kids and expose more kids to art, and that's our big overarching mission. So we're going to, we'll get twenty percent from all proceeds, any art that's sold on Saturday, twenty percent will come back to us, and we'll file, file that right back into the community, try to help Libby and Eddie with more, reaching kids more and getting kids more involved in art. We, we received a couple of grants from the Tennessee Arts Commission already, and we hope to receive more grants and find a bigger and more grants next year and just really kind of keep growing the organization. So there'll be things going on in the park Saturday. We have a chalk artist in the park, and we give away free chalk to kids so they can paint with the chalk, and we just encourage everybody to come out and, excuse me. Oh, and then also, I forgot, Bud Bishop, Mitchell Wyder's on our board, has gone to a lot of collectors here in town who have Bud Bishop's work, and he's gathered it back together, and it's on display at Bishop's Studio from ten to four. That's free and open to the public. So if you haven't seen Bud's work coming back in the year two thousand, it'd be a great opportunity to see his work, too. What else, maybe? Oh, and also the post office, yeah. So we have a beautiful mural in our post office. You see the real brains of our organization. We have a beautiful mural in our post office done by Margaret Covichism back at, as part of the WPA back in nineteen forty. It's a beautiful mural, and we were very blessed, her, one of her surviving sons and his wife and their daughter are coming. The Chisims are coming from Tucson, Arizona. We're going to recognize them on Friday, a special proclamation recognizing them and their mother's work. And so that'll happen Friday, then Saturday, the post office will be open. We'll have folks, volunteers from eleven to one in the post office along with the Chisen family to answer questions about, about that mural and what Margaret Covichism did. So that's just one of the activities. Did anything else? That's good. Next, I'll have her go up and give this presentation. Any questions or comments about, about what we're doing?
For one Friday, is that open to the public or is that just closed?
So Friday, it's a, Mayor Burnett is going to just be a brief ceremony at the post office at eleven AM, and we're just going to, Mayor Burnett's going to say a few words about the Chisen family, welcome home here, and, and then so that would be, the whole public is invited to attend that, yes. Well, thanks for your time.
Thank you, and thanks for what you guys are promoting in our community. I think a lot of people appreciate the program.
Yeah, the response has been great, and I think people just can be behind that vision of grooming the children, so it's been wonderful response. We're very pleased. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Allison Hudson from Magnolia River.
Thank you. Good evening. I would say there's a lot of really fantastic initiatives and events going on here. I wish that I lived closer so that I could participate in them. So appreciate everybody having me here tonight. Mayor has asked me to come and give an update on an existing project that we're doing for the town of Livingston. As she mentioned, I work with a company called Magnolia River. We are an engineering, GIS, and inspection firm based in northern Alabama, specifically in the Huntsville area. I am the director of GIS services there. And so some of you may remember, I think there's a couple of new faces on the Alderman Ward now, but I did speak to virtually the council back in June about a project that we were proposing to implement a GIS for the town, specifically for the water and wastewater utilities. A GIS is basically a digital mapping platform. This particular platform is hosted in the cloud. So sometimes they're on, you know, a standing computer that you have at your desktop. Other times, they're hosted virtually in the cloud that actually allows for better collaboration when they're hosted in that type of manner. So really, one of the driving factors at that particular moment was to fulfill a need for reimbursement of funding that was coming from the American Rescue Plan, called ARB. And that plan had issued about three point five billion dollars to the state of Tennessee. It was post-COVID relief funding. And then that funding itself was then reissued out across the state to different entities. And Mayor Hayes had applied for funding specifically for the water and wastewater. That's where one of the primary funding drivers was at that time. A part of that, of course, is to get that money back, you have to meet certain stipulations. And one of those stipulations was to have seventy-five percent of your water and wastewater facilities mapped. So what we at Magnolia proposed was coming in, creating a standardized database that was tailored to the needs of the ARB program, and then implementing the GIS platform, and then doing some data processing that allowed us to populate some information into that map. So that was approved back in June. We do appreciate that, and we started that following week. The effort was completed in the beginning of August. So the city of Livingston now has, for their natural gas, they have a GIS, and for their water and wastewater, they have a GIS. Both of those built by us, and both of those built to integrate well with one another when that time comes. Right now, after we had actually implemented the GIS, however, you have kind of an empty database. So there's, there's not data in there that you can see. So the next phase of the effort was to perform a field collection project. And that is where we send someone in the field, and we go to each facility that we can see. So for instance, when you're talking about water and wastewater, we're talking about customer meters, valves, hydrants, manholes, anything that is visible to us above ground. And we will go, we'll take a GPS unit, and we will stand near that asset, and we will take a collection point. And that point immediately populates into the map so that anybody who has access to that map is able to see this, and they know now, this is where our valve is, this is where our customer meter is. And when they need maintenance performed on these, it creates a lot better operational efficiency. There's a lot of safety improvements that come along with having this type of information in your GIS. Another factor of this particular GPS field collection effort is to ensure that the meters themselves are in the proper location, because if we can actually stand there and we can take that point, then we know for a fact that if somebody gets called to this, they are going to immediately be able to be there. You know, fortunately, the town has meter readers that know the system really well, but I think we all know that turnover happens, and so as people leave, that kind of institutional knowledge leaves with them, and this enables there to be a permanent digital record of all of these locations. So that's what we've been working on so far. As I mentioned, the first project was completed. That was a full database, the GIS and the data processing effort, and we are currently doing the GPS field collection. So if you see somebody strange wandering around your property, don't be scared. They are associated with the town, and we do have approval to be there, and we are just taking those locations of assets in order to benefit the town as they move forward in populating their GIS map. So the next phase that could potentially happen, I wanted to mention tonight, if you think about a map, even just think about a road atlas, you've got your towns, you've got your roads that are running between them. Well, a water system works very similarly to that. So a point would maybe be a town, the road would be a main line or a service. Right now, when we're collecting our points, so just static, valves, meters, hydrants, as I mentioned. The next thing that we'd like to provide for the town is actually digitizing in those mains and services. That way, it allows for connectivity, just like running pipes, you know, water runs, it flows. This allows you to visualize that flow in your system. It allows you to look for areas that are at risk based on the type of material that the pipe is, the date that it was installed, the different types of substrate that it's in, you know, sort of ground, the elevation, various different variables. So it helps you to map those, to identify areas that could need maintenance or could be more at risk of leaks, and then make maintenance plans in order to, you know, prevent that from happening. And I'm not here to ask for anything tonight, I'm just here to give you an update on the work that we've been doing, and I'd love to answer any questions if you have any. Otherwise, I'll continue to give updates to Mayor Burnett. And at some point, I'd love to come and present and actually show you an image of So the next phase that could potentially happen, I wanted to mention tonight, if you think about a map, even just think about a road atlas, you've got your towns, you've got your roads that are running between them. Well, a water system works very similarly to that. So a point would maybe be a town, the road would be a main line or a service. Right now, we're collecting our points, so just static valves, meters, hydrants, as I mentioned. The next thing that we'd like to provide for the town is actually digitizing in those mains and services. That way, it allows for connectivity, just like running pipes, you know, water runs, it flows. This allows you to visualize that flow in your system. It allows you to look for areas that are at risk based on the type of material that the pipe is, the date that it was installed, the different types of substrate that it's in, you know, sort of ground, the elevation, areas, different variables. So it helps you to map those, to identify areas that could need maintenance or could be more at risk of leaks, and then make maintenance plans in order to, you know, prevent that from happening. And I'm not here to ask for anything tonight, I'm just here to give you an update on the work that we've been doing, and I'd love to answer any questions if you have any. Otherwise, I'll continue to give updates to Mayor Burnett. And at some point, I'd love to come and present and actually show you an image of the map itself as it continues to get populated and kind of show you how it works and how it can be visualized, because there are other things that you can do with these maps for community engagement, creating outward-facing maps that don't have any proprietary information, but they do allow the community to see what is going on. So if there's certain maintenance that's happening in a specific area, you can actually depict that, and you can show to your community, hey, this is going to be happening in this area. They can look it up based on their address to know if they might be potentially impacted by that. There's a lot of really great things. I could talk about GIS forever. I'm definitely a GIS nerd, but happy to share what we have been doing, and I look forward to continuing to work with the town.
Who has questions? It's pretty deep, isn't it?
Hey, you put open it, right?
I can definitely summarize and send it.
Okay, great. Well, we appreciate you coming from Huntsville.
Thank you, absolutely. It's my pleasure.
Look forward to seeing you next time.
Happy to be here. Good evening.
Thank you, Al. Okay, next on the agenda is Chief Rice Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of directors. We have submitted from the city, again, we've got a dub some more stuff, and we're continuing to work through a lot of other items that we have at the city that has become a no-use anymore, or replacing. So there's no sense having something sitting around that we can't use right now. So I'm asking on the list that you have, asking for permission to take that and add it to the other items we have that's on the previous that we haven't got rid of just yet and go to gov deals, and sell those items to bring back that revenue back into the city to help replace some older items that we have. Our list has got several on it, and try to get those things done. You're probably looking at about December at the most to get that really done and get it up. If we have any more items, come back in December, and then maybe go back and get it by the first of the year, so it can be replaced. Let him move through. Second.
Okay. So we have a motion by David Langford and a second by Rex Dell. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passed.
Also, Mayor, when we bring up the city of Livingston and the police department that has been together with the fire department, they are gathering up a relief to send to East Tennessee where all the flood is going, and we've got it posted out there, just to let everybody know who is watching or listening. We are taking up donation stuff and will be sent out, and Captain Gohr and Chief Dial was heading up that relief to head to East Tennessee with this. So we would like for anybody who would help and send, bring it there, and we'll carry it there at 2:00 a.m. before the, we thank you everybody. Thank you.
Okay, other business? If not, we have a motion, you just can't wait. We have a motion adjourned by Rex, we have a second. Okay, all in favor? All opposed, flag sign, motion passed. This meeting is adjourned.